Man, this is a somber crowd tonight, I'm telling you what. Did I miss something? Gee whiz, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, January 21, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Thank you for being here. Let me remind you, as I remind myself, to please take care of your telephones. Be sure they're on vibrate so that we don't get a racket. Madam Clerk, all Commissioners are present tonight along with our attorney and county manager. Ms. Margaret, she's out and about tonight. Okay, all right. I will remind all speakers who come to the podium tonight, please be sure the microphone is turned on. The red light will come on when you press the button to the right. Excuse me. All right, this brings us to item number two, invocation, and Commissioner Burns is going to lead our invocation tonight. Let's stand together, please.
Goodness, pray. Father, we come to you humbly and ask for your guidance, your direction, and that you would grant us the wisdom to make the decisions here tonight that would serve the best interest of the people in this county. And I'm especially grateful to have these young folks with us tonight, and Lord just let us always be an example for them, and we just pray that your guiding hand be over this meeting and all those room attendants. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Just remain standing if you will, and we are especially glad tonight to have Boy Scout Pack 199, led by Heather Smith, Cub Master. We are delighted that you guys are here tonight to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Flag's right back here. It might be hard to see behind Mr. Burns, but everybody turn, let's face the flag, and you guys turn and lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you guys stand by right there just a second. We're gonna come by and get a... You'll help me with these, won't you? We're gonna come by and get a picture.
Hold the motion, gentlemen, you'll have to let me get them back.
First time I ever done standing in the rear.
Everybody look here, cheers.
All right, with that, I will thank those guys again for being here, Boy Scout Pack 199, and remind others that we would love for groups to come and be a part of opening our meeting, provide Pledge of Allegiance during our meeting times. All right, gentlemen, this brings us to item number four, approval of agenda. Let me ask that we consider removing, not removing, but moving an item from our agenda tonight. The presentation item from our audit firm, they were a little bit concerned about whether they are from the eastern end of the state, and I understand there may be some snow falling down that way, but they have asked to move their presentation to next month, so with that, a change, moving the audit presentation to the March meeting, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Those with a favor sign five, the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's five to zero. All right. Gentlemen, tonight we have approval of meeting minutes for October the first, 2024, Board of Commissioners' pre-agenda meeting; October 15th, 2024, Board of Commissioners' regular meeting; November the 5th, 2024, Board of Commissioners' pre-agenda meeting. Are there any questions or concerns on those meeting minutes? Here none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following minutes as written, from October 1, October 15, and November the 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those with a favor sign five, the uplifted hand. That's five to zero now. All right, brings us to item number six, presentations tonight. First item will come from our Foothills Regional Airport Authority and our airport administrator, Mr. Brent Brinkley. We'll bring that up. Evening, Brent.
Thank you for having me. My name's Brent Brinkley. I'm the airport manager at the Foothills Regional Airport, and I'm here to give you the updates on the current operation and future developments of the Foothills Regional The Foothills Regional Airport is located on the northern border of Burke County, just off of Antioch Road, about eight miles north of here. The Foothills Airport has a 5,500-foot runway capable of landing most aircraft smaller than a 737. There are three instrument approaches available during inclement weather, with one approach that will bring aircraft down as low as 250 feet. To put that in perspective, the Hickory Airport will bring aircraft down around 200 feet, so we're just within 50 feet of that airport, which is pretty amazing technology that we have out there. We offer fuel for both piston and turbine aircraft. Enterprise and Hertz deliver rental cars to our customers as needed. Businesses located at the airport offer other services such as flight training and aircraft maintenance, and the airport consists of over 1,100 acres, with a large portion of that available for future development. The Morganton-Leonor Airport Authority operated the airport until 1999, when Burke and Caldwell County joined in ownership of the airport, and the Foothills Regional Airport Authority was created by legislature at that time. The Airport Authority is an eight-member board with two appointees from Burke, Caldwell, Burke County's support has had major impacts on the airport and its current developments. Randy Burns is one of our board members for the Airport Authority. We appreciate your guidance and support. Randy and county manager Brian Epple have been very supportive of the future growth of the airport and have assisted in communicating the airport's funding needs to our local legislators. Your efforts were instrumental in the airport receiving $6 million in grant funds from the state budget this year to build several new hangars. We're also very thankful to Representative Hall and Representative Blackwell for their efforts in getting these grant funds approved through the state budget. These projects are truly game-changing for the airport. This is a short video showing a portion of the transient traffic flying in and out of the airport in 2023. This will help give you an idea of how significant the impact your local airport has. If you can see the timeline at the top, the video starts in January and plays through each month of 2023. The airport is a major driver of the local economic engine. When new businesses are looking at our area for development, we see many of their professional planners, engineers, and executives flying in to see the area. We typically see them several times during the building and planning stages, and once their business is up and running, we're here to support them as needed. We're seeing a significant growth in tourism traffic, and we also have a lot of transient customers coming in and out that have new real estate in the area. All the flights that you see are spending money locally on food, rental cars, fuel, hotels, et cetera, which all have a major impact on our local economy. We have medical, search and rescue, aerial firefighting, flights coming in and out as needed. We also have flight training for anyone working towards a future career as a pilot, or if they're just wanting to do it for fun or personal travel. It's important to note also that all the airport revenues from operations go directly into capital projects and maintaining the airport. It's pretty neat to look at to see where all of our traffic is coming from. You can see the areas, Raleigh, Atlanta, we get a lot of folks from Florida, and then we see a lot of flights just from everywhere, coming from every which way. I'll get it here in a second. There we go. Recently, the NC Division of Aviation completed an economic impact study of all airports in North Carolina. That study showed that airport had a $25 million economic impact, supported 125 jobs, and generated over $1.5 million in tax revenue. We have around 17,000 operations per year and 60 home-based aircraft. This drawing shows many of our planned projects. The most recent project that we completed was an access road on the backside of the airport to keep vehicle traffic off the ramp and repave the old asphalt at the airport. We also completed a land acquisition for the Runway 2-1 Runway Protection Zone to protect our approach into the airport. As mentioned earlier, our airport currently has 60 home-based aircraft. In addition to those aircraft, we have a waiting list of 90 people who are wanting to move their aircraft to our airport. This has been one of our top priorities as the growth of the airport has come to a standstill without room for more aircraft. In December, the board approved bids for grading and paving of a new T-hanger. This construction will start in the spring of 2025 and will be the first of several hangars that will be built thanks to the recent grants received from the state, and the T-hangers will be, let's see here, it's right there in that yellow area, right there. The terminal area expansion is the area we are planning to build several hangar buildings. Caldwell County Economic Development recently received $50,000 in Golden Leaf Grant Funds that will be used for environmental work in this area, and that will go into the orange area, the terminal area. We're hopeful to see construction begin in that area in 2025. We're also working on extending our parallel taxiway, which is this yellow line right here. We currently have the portion here in the gray. This will increase the safety for all aircraft operating at the airport as it will decrease the amount of time the aircraft have to spend on the active runway. We've completed the design and environmental, and last month we received the federal grant award for 5.9 million, and will be able to start construction this year. We've also requested grant funding for a new terminal building, and I'm hopeful that it will get picked up in the next five to 10 years as the current building is starting to show its age. The airport recently played a major role in disaster relief efforts for Hurricane Helene. For the first couple of weeks following the hurricane, we were supporting over 100 operations a day with our four-man crew. These flights rescued many people who were stranded from floodwaters and impassable roads. They were delivering critical medical supplies, food, water, clothing, Starlinks, and other critical supplies to hard-won areas over western North Carolina. The terminal building was lined with cots inside and out for the military personnel staying the night at the airport since there were no local hotels available. We had supplies being flown in and drove in from all over the U.S. Private fixed wing and helicopters played a major role in getting these supplies to the areas that needed them the most. Helicopters were surveying power lines, gas lines, railroads. Local officials were taking flights to survey damage so that they could accurately estimate the amount of support needed from outside government agencies. We're still seeing regular flights from local businesses and government officials as we're working to rebuild our communities. That concludes my presentation, and I just want to thank you all for your support, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you all have.
All right, thank you, Brent. Any questions for Brent on his report tonight?
Brent, can you tell us how many airplanes or customers are currently on the waiting list for a hangar?
We've got 90 on the waiting list right now.
90?
Yeah.
I want to bounce off of what Randy said, because that's what I wrote down. We got 90 waiting, we got 60 there. What is our capacity at the airport right now?
Right now, we are at capacity.
60 is the capacity?
Yeah.
So, demand is there, right?
Yeah.
Supply and demand. Okay.
And I'll just have one question. Do we capture, kind of like if you go to a Chamber of Commerce or to a local travel stop, they have a little logbook that says, you know, reason for, that's voluntary. I mean, I know they have a flight plan, obviously, but I'm saying that on a voluntary basis, do we know, I mean, are they going to Caldwell, to Burke, to both?
Yeah, that's a great idea. We do not have that, but we certainly could set something up like that.
If you put that when the guys, pilots, and crew came in, they could just voluntarily say, "Reason for your stop," and they might say, "Headed to Caldwell County," or "Headed to Burke County."
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
One more plane, flying right in my head there. Do we have any type of, what's...
Microphone. I'm sorry, I thought... There you go. How about now? Hey, do we have any type of, what do y'all eat out there? What kind of restaurants people eat at when they land there? I know we don't have much of a restaurant, do we, or some kind of flight deck?
There's not much super close. It's about 15 minutes to...
But we don't have anything here at the airport when people come in for the first time, like, wow, they got a little something here to stop and get a little something, or...
Yeah, they usually come here to Morganton or to Leonore.
Okay. Thank you.
Are most of the people that's on your waiting list the 90, are those people wanting to come here for recreation and fun, or are they here looking, I mean, is it for businesses and so forth?
There's, you see a little bit of a both. It's probably about 50/50. You get a lot of people that have aircraft that use them for private and business use also, but most of them are, most of the people on that list are single-engine aircraft. But I also know that at the same time, if we had hangars available, there's also larger turbine aircraft in our area that could use the facilities. So, I know Charlotte Douglas Airport had 70 jets on their waiting list, and they just quit taking names, and that was years ago. So, those airplanes are gonna be going out to these other airports that are around, and we could benefit from that eventually.
All right, see you now. Thank you very much. I entertain a motion to accept this report as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All those with a favor sign five, the uplifted hand.
Good luck.
Thanks, Brent. Thank you. All right, this brings us to item number two now, and the presentation comes from the county manager, departmental update from the EMS collections. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bless you. I know we talked about this in detail pre-agenda, but the idea of tonight's presentation is to give the board more of a comprehensive update on some of our, what we call, budget reengineering strategies. The timing is we work towards your priority session, goal-setting work session in March. We're in the process of kicking off our budget season. Those documents, working paper, and budget packets went out to department heads actually last week, and then, you know, we'll be following that calendar all the way through a June consideration by the Board of Commissioners. Couple of things that we know this year as we head into that season, and we'll talk more about what reengineering is as we move through this PowerPoint slide, but we know that for the first time, really, in recent history, that we could see a potential decline in property tax revenue, which is about 55% of our total general fund budget. We're getting early numbers in across all the sectors of the property tax base, which is personal property, real property, state boards, which are regulated industries like power and telecommunications, and also motor vehicles. We think we're gonna hover around 1.7 or 1.8% growth this year, which is a little bit less than inflation. In a typical environment, you would hope that your natural growth in community development would at least pace with inflation. So, when that's a little bit slower, I think it's an indication that your resource availability forecast could be less. When you add on to that, on January 2nd, when we mailed out our personal property listing forms, we also are seeking feedback from taxpayers about property, real property that may be impaired, and those valuations may be reduced. We have not factored that into that roughly 1.8% growth yet. So, there's some things that we know we need to be considering as we begin the budget process. To add to that, we also, for the first time in about 10 years, between eight and 10 years to this point, have seen a moderately gross decline in sales tax, which is another 25% of our total revenue. You know, I think that we've tried to build our budget in a very conservative way, in a way that's what we call last-year recession-ready, that we didn't over-leverage ourselves on some of these economically-driven revenue sources, so our budget, as we start, is in a lot better place than some of the surrounding communities and counties that will be impacted by the same things we are. While part of sales tax, as you all know, is point-of-sale driven, meaning the county that collects it, it comes back. The other portion is a statewide collection effort and then redistributed per capita. So, I say all that to say, the things that we're seeing here in our economy are not unique to us, that other counties will see them, and I think that that largely is what's so important about the way we've drafted prior-year budgets to lead into this year, and also this idea of budget reengineering, which is all about, you know, how do we repurpose existing revenue sources or lower cost in a way to create budget flexibility to pursue the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan. All of these ideas really fall under this focus area number four, on your strategic plan of being good fiduciaries and this idea of physical stewardship. And reengineering, I think, most aligns in this administrative plan, this three-phase plan that we introduced last year, React, Rebuild, Rethink, into this rethink phase. As you all are aware, up to a couple of years ago, we were experiencing some turbulence in our operational plan, and React was all about stabilizing. Rebuild has largely been about being purpose-driven, redefining our culture, trying to accept some, what I would consider, industry-best practices, and rebuild how we do county government. And rethink is about how do we pursue this intentional culture of high performance. High performance is how do we get better every single day? It's this idea of incremental improvement over time so that we can serve our purpose of improving lives, and I think we do that both through a cultural component of behavior, but as well as strategy, which is what is our technical, mechanical, you know, avenues to achieve our goals. We know that a culture of high performance is gonna increase productivity, make us more innovative, ultimately reduce turnover. I think we've largely seen that across county government, and it also promotes connection amongst people on the team so that we hold each other accountable, so that we can move into implementation again of your strategic plan and work on the spectrum of good, better, and best. That's the idea. Reengineering is a huge component of that. Lots of things that we want to accomplish require resources, and as we just talked about with property tax values and sales tax, which is cumulatively 75-plus percent of our total revenue, there's not always new resources to achieve that. So, sometimes it's how do you redistribute in the highest and best-use way resources that you already have? And that's what we're talking about with reengineering. How do we, are there ways that we can avoid existing costs or reduce fixed costs? Are there ways that we can identify alternative revenue streams? Or for revenue streams that are already existing, how can we maximize those? And then lastly, for the things that we are doing, how can we make sure that we're measuring outcome and efficiency to potentially lower our cost per unit or to have higher productivity for the same cost so that, again, we can achieve more? So, I'm gonna run you through a few of the strategies that are currently in motion, and then I want to give you more of a comprehensive update on our central collection reengineering strategy, which revolves around EMS billing. I'll start here in the solid waste department. Really, three strategies in the 24-25 budget for solid waste. One, and the most material, was historically, we moved away from a contracted service with a third-party hauler. We did not have a municipal solid waste, that's what MSW landfill here in Burke County. We have a transfer station, which means that all of the household garbage in Burke County that comes to the landfill is then put on a truck and hauled to a privately-owned landfill in Caldwell County owned by Republic, and so we already pay tipping fees for them to handle the waste, but we were secondarily paying for a transport cost, at about $21 a ton. So, we believe that we could do that less expensively in-house, and we shifted that July 1st, and we think that we're gonna save over $1 million in our solid waste fund this year by doing that. We also have been installing, we've done three out of six sites to this point. We've, secondly, had a contract with Republic to manage our cardboard collection, so if you go to any of our six collection sites, there's a place for cardboard recycling. The contract, basically, we paid per pull, and so Republic was running the truck system, and no matter how full the container was, it was being pulled, and we paid per pull. That contract was accumulated to about $160,000 per year, and we also did not get the secondary market recycling revenue, so we removed that from the contract, at least for these three sites that we've completed so far. We're compacting that ourselves, and really, we think, A, we get to keep the market revenue, but it's gonna significantly, over time, eliminate that contract. But, you know, we're, by compacting it, we don't have to buy new trucks, we don't have to hire new people. And a container that was being pulled, you know, daily or every other day, now is being pulled once every three months because we're not hauling air and we're able to compact that cardboard. And then the third one is just really looking and scrutinizing our staffing model to eliminate overtime, and you can see there, we expect to save about $80,000 this year there. Our water sewer fund in Burke County, both are pretty similar. We're a purchased water and a sewer system, which means that we don't treat either, that we buy water and sell it to the end-users, we collect sewer and pay the city of Hickory and the town of Valleys to process that. And in both departments, we have, you know, I'll call it, we've been out of balance, we've had some spoils, meaning that we're buying more water than we're selling, and we're treating more sewer than we're producing. So, we're working through an AIA study that'll be presented to you in March by a company called Willis Engineering. We've done smoke testing, we're trying to identify the water that we're buying and not selling, where's that going? And the sewer that we're treating but not producing, where's that coming from? Because we're paying for that, and that is, if we were in a retail environment, again, you'd call it spoils. That's inventory that we can't account for, and we're trying to drill that down, and I think that's gonna have a very significant cost impact. We've also done some, what I would call, strategic purchasing to leverage economies to scale. Got good news this morning that Motorola has finally shipped our public safety radios. I know that the board's been briefed on the fleet of radios that our folks are using, have been using, and the life safety issues with that, but we were able to leverage a technology credit with Motorola through some negotiations, and then bolt on to that, some legislative funding through the volunteer fire departments in the city of Morganton and Valleys, and that purchase got us a 29% discount, and across all the different sectors, we reduced the cost by about $1.2 million. That's an example of cost avoidance. Simple things like managing our fleet and building that fleet maintenance model out three to four years ahead of time, you know, trying to deploy iPads for technology cost versus an MDT, and MDT is called a mobile data terminal, and that's more of a bulky, much more expensive computer, piece of software that goes into public safety vehicles, and using applications that just save, as you can see there, one-time savings of almost $20,000. We're also implementing in year two now some comp time policies across county government and electronic timekeeping so that we're a little bit more managed in our human capital costs. You can see that from '23 to '24, the part-time labor cost went from 1.8 to 1.2, and our, excuse me, our overtime, and part-time from 8:44 to 7:18, which, again, accumulates over time to be a little bit more efficient in our practice. We've talked about this, we're self-insured, self-funded, employee wellness plan, we want to be pursuing high performance there, too. Our health claims are largely driven by high-cost claimants. High-cost claimants are largely driven by lack of disease recognition and management, so we're starting a biometric process here in March, and we hope to identify folks who have... have multiple risk factors and align them with some type of health coach that can help mitigate and maybe prevent some of those future costs. The bigger difference, bigger issue with that plan coming into this year is that our pharmaceutical costs were largely unmanaged at about 41% of our total plan costs and total claims costs. So through some formulary redesign and also just some negotiations with our third-party administrator, we've got that down. We think that's going to be about a million-dollar savings this year. And to put that perspective, that's only about an $8 million fund. The pharmacy component of that was only about $2.5 million, but really think we're going to experience some significant savings. I was with Commissioner Barry earlier today. We're just getting numbers now for those changes being implemented, and we've seen significant return, as expected, on the pharmaceutical side. So we're excited to see that kind of play out between now and the end of the year. Now, Mr. Chairman, what I wanted to brief the board on more in depth was this EMS billing, which was one of the other reengineering strategies we have for this year. And I think it brings in two of the components. I think it's cost avoidance because we eliminated a contract, and I also think it's revenue maximization. So EMS is one of the departments in county government that we have a fee for service, and it's really cost recruitment. That never gets to 100%, but we are able to bill insurance. So that's Medicaid, Medicare, makes up about 65, 70% of our total billings, but all of the private insurances as well, when someone receives some type of pre-hospitalization transport. They largely fall into two categories. The more basic is called BLS, which is basic life support. The more advanced is advanced life support, ALS. And there's different billing based on ICD-10 medical billing codes that, excuse me, that drive those costs. Historically, we have partnered with an outside company, ESMC, and they do all the billing. So our paramedics run the call, they do what's called a patient care report, they then submit that information to the billing company who facilitates getting the bill out as well as collecting. And, you know, they're doing that for a lot of clients across the state and across the region. They keep about 6% to 8% of those collections for their fee for service, and then the county obviously gets, you know, the remainder. When we looked at it over time, we felt like, you know, our revenues were somewhat flat, and we felt like our collection percentage, which drives that revenue stream, could be improved. We also noted, you know, as we did better, we had to pay more. Our contract went up because it's a percentage of collections. And we felt like it, in some way, really held us back from being innovative in the way that we are moving forward. You can see the chart here on the right is showing what our contracted service cost was last year, $398,000. So the second phase of that analytic was, are there some counties around us that maybe do this differently, that don't contract with a third party? Cleveland County, where I'd been, Medic, which is Charlotte, and Stanley, were three counties that we felt like did it pretty well. And their revenue, average revenue per transport was well over $300, whereas when we looked at some of the counties in our region that maybe contracted that out, their revenue for transport was significantly less. So, you know, generally, anything you do yourself, assuming you have the appropriate expertise, you're going to do a little bit better job of chasing calls, working denials, working referrals, you know, negotiating with payers, and just, you know, not be a bill it three times and stick it to the side, and it kind of go away. We also have some other types of billings that we can do when it's in-house, such as debt set-off and wage garnishments, we'll talk about those in just a moment. So we implemented that actually last May. So we, you know, we're operating in our first full budget cycle of having that program in-house. At this point, we're trending towards what we think is going to be about a $6.9 million revenue source, and you can see how that compares to prior year. So I think that, I think largely at this point, I'm optimistic that it's going to be a fruitful decision, the right thing to do. When you look at our, what we consider our analytic, or our predictive analytic for revenue per call, these folks are all over 300. We're trending at 370, so that's even better than we expected. That may ebb and flow between now and the end of the year, but pleased to report that it's within $100, you know, within $95 almost more per transport. We hit last, as we closed 12/31/24 from a county-level perspective, first year in the history of our county, we went over 20,000 calls. So our EMS department last year did over 20,000 for the first time in our history. And that, when you're looking at that kind of revenue change per call or per transport, that's going to have a really significant impact on your ability to collect. So again, some other things that we're working on in this, under this umbrella, is hospital contracts. So there's a couple of different types of hospital contracts. In Burke County, like a lot of counties in North Carolina, we have one hospital system but two hospital locations. They have a similar hospital ID. So Valleys, which largely operates as an emergency department, if folks go there and are then, you know, admitted for inpatient or have to have some other types of tests or scores, on paper, those are the same hospital. And I-40 just, or Highway 70, just becomes a long hallway. And so we have a negotiated contract for transport. So if someone goes to the emergency room but they need to be admitted, we bring them to the Morganton Hospital, and we're working through renegotiating that in a more beneficial way to Burke County. We think that's going to produce additional income to offset those costs. As those numbers continue to climb, I think something that is very true of hospital, you know, business models these days is there's going to be continued inter-facility transports as well as escalated level of care. And that takes a tremendous impact on our 911 system, right? So we want to make sure we have dedicated resources to those inter-facility transports so that they happen, and patients get to where they need to go, but that it doesn't impair or elongate our emergency response time for ambulances that are supposed to be running 911 calls. So having those dedicated resources is additional cost, so we want to make sure we have a contract to offset that. We're also working on these, what I would call authoritative billings with debt set-off and wage garnishments that we think will help bolster our collection efforts as well, and ultimately, I think, help hedge some of the other risk areas that we have in the revenue portfolio for the '25, '26 budget season. So in summary, Mr. Chairman, I would say that our reengineering strategies are a big part of our budget process, and I'll try to begin a series of briefings to the board in more detail, similar to EMS, on the other strategies that we're implementing, but I think we're making our business model better. I can answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Any questions to Brad on his report?
I just have one question, Brian. We talked about switching out those radios and pretty significant cost. What do we do with the excess or the old radios?
We use them until they break, a lot of them. So we have about, I want to think, about 250 across county government. I think our first swath is going to replace about 75% of those, and then we have a five-year kind of switch-out plan. They're supposed, they're designed to have a seven-to-nine-year life. Some of ours go all the way back to '05, '06, '07. So we're not going to stop using them. They may be used in alternative ways, we may use them for part-time employees. The problem is, once they break, they, there's no parts, you can't fix them. And I want to think, next year or the year after, I think I saw the sheriff here or Chief Robbins could answer, there's some technology changes that are happening, that's happening with Viper, which is the state communication systems that won't support that anymore. I think the short story is, we'll use them as long as we can, but I don't know how much longer that is. What I can say is, with this influx of, I think, about 160 that are coming to the county in this first year, the remainder have a less, a five-year or less replacement plan so that, you know, five years from now, all of ours are the most current technology and all that kind of stuff. We've looked at residual value in those radios, like on eBay or GovDeals, and it's pennies and dollars. It's just not a significant amount of money.
Other questions? All right. Seeing here and now, we'll entertain a motion to accept the report as presented.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. Five to zero. Thank you, Brad. All right. This brings us to item number seven, scheduled public hearings tonight. We have two public hearings. This will, first one will come from community development, zoning map amendment ZMA 2024-10, presented by Alan Blines. Good evening, Alan.
Get my lights on here. Thank you. Commissioners, members of the public, staff, thank you. Tonight on the agenda is a rezoning request from John and Rita Yunt for two parcels of land located on Liberty Church Road. I think I can advance that. This is located, they're vacant parcels today. They were once part of a business called 72 Degrees Heating and Air, and when that gentleman retired, he sold off the property, and these were part of that land. So it totals about one acre. They're currently zoned general business because they were originally part of that business property, not used in any active way. And so the request is to rezon those to residential three, which is our more flexible residential zone and our zoning ordinance. This is the current zoning map, and that map is general business. The two parcels are located here. And this is the future land use map. So future land use map is used to sort of advise or direct development and land uses in Burke County. So we use that map. When we have a rezoning request, though, we have to consider that map and at times make adjustments to it. So in this case, if the rezoning was approved tonight, we would be adjusting that map to show the yellow section, which is really residential infill all around it. And so that would go away from the commercial use expected there to more of residential use. Now, my understanding is from Mr. Yunt, who's with us tonight, is that he just hopes to be able to use those two parcels for putting a cup, two homes. So I can answer any questions for you, and we can hold our public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Any questions for Alan before I open the public hearing? Seeing here and now, this time I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone here tonight to speak to this item? Seeing here and now, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, to adopt ordinance number 2024-02 as it relates to ZMA 2024-10, rezoning two parcels of land corresponding to pins 278-326-1136 and 278-32601-35, located at Zero Liberty Church Road Hickory, from general business GB District to residential three district. The board finds that the rezoning is to be consistent with the intent of the blueprint for Burke Strategic Land Use Plan because the plan allows, or the plan shows residential infill and surrounding site, future land use map, and it shall be adjusted to residential infill. Furthermore, the board finds that the request is reasonable and in the public interest because, one, Burke County is experiencing a housing shortage, and rezoning the parcels will support infill housing, and, two, rezoning two parcels totaling 1.02 acres to residential three zoning district will support the character of the area with compatible residential uses.
Thank you. Commissioner Burns, gentlemen, you've heard the motion. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand.
Mr. Chairman, that ordinance should be 2025-02. A small technical correction.
I see it there. I just want to say, good job, Randy, for reading all that.
I won't promise it was word for word.
All right. I think I saw a five to zero. One more time, guys, just, okay, five to zero, Mountain Park. All right. Item number two, also coming from community development tonight, text amendment ZTA 20. Should that be four or five, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Wait just a minute, Alan.
No, that should be 2024.
Okay. All right. Just want to be sure.
Your zoning, it started last year?
Yeah, it started last December, so it is a 2024 date on that.
All right. So temporary dwellings, RVs, and campers, public hearing. Mr. Blines?
Thank you, commissioners, members of the public. Since Hurricane Helene made landfall, many of our residents are still trying to recover and repair, and in some cases, replace their homes across the county. As of mid-November, we counted about 160 households in Burke County that were receiving some sort of FEMA-provided housing support. Sometimes that was in a hotel, sometimes it's temporary shelter. This is, of course, we're in much better shape than many of our neighbors. So it came to our attention that a lot of ordinances already have something in place for temporary housing in conditions of, during an emergency. Well, we don't. So we wanted to try to make that happen since we were getting calls already for FEMA to place units on a temporary basis across the county, you know, where needed. So this is why we're bringing this to you now. We did look at some of our neighbors down east who have a lot of experience with this and considered at least three other counties, there were coastal counties who were utilizing something quite similar, so we used that language. As you remember, during the planning board, during the pre-agenda review, we did have a question about, what about situations where the, you know, the permanent home site is not quite ready to be occupied? Maybe there's trees in the way, maybe there's some grading that has to be done to get in there, and could they place it on another site? And so we've considered that, and we've offered that as part of the text in blue. Added to that, what you all had originally reviewed during the pre-agenda, it's touched upon there in blue, and that would permit the placement of a, it's still tied to a building permit because we're still working on something on another site, but we're allowing it to happen on a more convenient location, maybe one that's kind of ready to go for somebody as an option, renewable, renewable on six-month basis. So we've added a few new definitions into our ordinance, and we have those there for you to consider. It's temporary housing building and temporary dwelling, we kind of have those noted. And then we have the program, how that would work, and it is tied to a building permit, so we're trying to link those together. And it would help people who are building a new home, repairing a home they can't live in, but it's there, and it may not always be during a hurricane-type event. It could be another natural disaster, or it could just be a fire at your home, and you're trying to stay there while you're repairing your home. So we're trying to give people more options. The other benefit, I think, could help us here is, since we have a shortage of housing, when people are building new houses altogether, they could maybe stay somewhere temporarily while they're building their own home, and it gives them someplace to be at on the property. We, I get calls occasionally where people have been building a home and, you know, somebody will come on their property when they're not there, maybe take property or take tools or things like that. Well, this would, could help alleviate some of that as well. So folks can get on their property sooner, we can get them in there, and we hope that after our public hearing, we're, you all are very supportive of that. I can answer any questions for you if you'd like.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Any questions for Alan before I open the public hearing? All right. Seeing here and now, this time I will open the public hearing. Do we have anybody here tonight to speak to this item? Seeing here and now, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, to adopt ordinance number 2025-01, amending the Burke County zoning ordinance as it relates to ZTA 2024-03. In the following consistency statement, the Burke County Board of Commissioners find the zoning text amendment corresponding to ZTA 2024-03, amending Article III of the Burke County zoning ordinance by adding a new section, 3.12, temporary dwellings/RVs and campers, to be consistent with the blueprint Burke Strategic Land Use Plan. The plan supports the development of new housing stock in Burke County and maintaining and repairing older housing units. The amendment will allow property owners to have a new option to stay on their property during construction of new dwellings or repairing an existing unit. Burke County has a housing shortage, and this may alleviate some of the difficulty of finding housing when building a new home, which is a goal consistent with the plan. The permitting process allows the inspection of temporary utility connections to ensure safety.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Gentlemen, you've heard the motion. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. That is five to zero. Thank you, Alan. All right. This brings us to item number eight tonight, informal public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any folks for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one citizen that pre-registered, Ms. Christie Guppin.
All right. Thank you very much. Christie, please state your name and address.
I'm Christie Gupton. I live at 200 Lafere Drive in Morganton. I rise before you today to express my gratitude for Commissioner Barriers' nomination and votes from Commissioner Smith and Stroud to allow me to fill an open seat on the Burke County Public Health Advisory Board. I've been a fierce advocate for healthier communities for a long time, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve, share my knowledge with fellow community leaders and county officials. My expertise hovers over a broad spectrum of topics such as access to high-quality care while also addressing the cost of care and upfront transparency required to ensure those two value propositions can coexist. To that end, with your blessing, I'd like to come here periodically to share small three-minute bites of knowledge that I've spent the last 25 years gathering, some from personal experience, some from industry experience, some from the experience of others. And the public comments section of these proceedings should accommodate nicely. The sharing of knowledge, exchange of ideas lead to innovation and renewed best practices. I made a rough list of topics that might be of interest to this community, not just in addition, you know, to this body, but hopefully, community leaders and the business leaders in this community who, I hope, watch these proceedings online. So, and as well as every day, Burke County citizens who should be stakeholders in building a healthier Burke County, shaping our, our future. So here's just a short list of things I'm working on. How local independent community pharmacies are, you have unique ways that are positioned to help communities stay healthy. How we can use our local resourcefulness to reduce the cost of prescription drugs by actually circumventing the pharmacy benefits managers that Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, County Manager Epley mentioned. They're really mainly just middlemen extracting value and wealth out of our communities and not investing in it. So utilizing local direct primary care to drive down the cost of not just primary care, but all health care. And using data and analytics to shine a light on spending and ensure overspending is not happening. But when we do find that overspending is happening, rerouting and rewiring that care navigation process. So to prefer local independent sourcing of high-quality health care. Allowing transparency to show us where, to make more investments into local sources of personalized health care. And even highlighting how our own county health department can reap the benefits of local sourcing of health care when that's appropriate, speaking to the revenue generation that you mentioned earlier. So Commissioner, Chairman Britton and Commissioner Burns, I aim to win you over and prove to you that I'm up to the challenge of collaborating with our community. I might not have earned your votes, but I hope to earn your trust and time that I was the right choice. So thank you for giving me a few minutes to say, thank you. I've left you a little flyer that gives you different types of ways that we can communicate. Please feel free always to call, text, or email me anytime and follow me on the different, you know, online platforms where we can engage in a helpful discussion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gupton. Any others?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll close the public comment session at this time. We'll move on to item number nine, consent agenda. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, as a reminder, each of these details are in your packet and covered also at pre-agenda, but so bear with me as I walk through a fairly short consent agenda for consideration. Item one is from the board, and this is a resolution adopting your annual code of ethics. Item two is from our clerk, and this is both appointments and reappointments to our local emergency planning committee. Item three is a resolution on behalf of the City of Morganton, removing the plat review officer. Item four, also from the clerk's office, is an appointment to the Adult Care Nursing Home Advisory Committee. Item five is from the sheriff's office, and this is recommended approval for the jail medical plan. I will state that I spoke to Mr. Hall just briefly before the meeting, who had a couple of immaterial changes to that medical plan as far as, from a legal perspective, but he was comfortable, and he wanted me to report that to the board. Item six is from the tax department. This is your collection report for December 2024. And item seven is also from the tax department, your release and refund report for December. Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions on any of those items, may I?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions on any of these items? Seeing here none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor, signify by the uplifted hand. Five to zero. All right. This brings us to item number 10, items for decision tonight. We have one item. This will come from our clerk, appointment to the Morganton Board of Adjustment ETJ. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. This is a request to make some appointments to the Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, and that stands for Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. The county appoints two members to this board, and one seat is a regular member, and the other seat, seat number two, is an alternate. And you have two applications, one from Johnny Carswell and the other one from Jean Kirby. The terms are for three years ending June 3, 2028, for both seats.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, we've had this information. Gentlemen, we have two seats, two applicants. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the regular seat, seat number one, and I would entertain nominations.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, since we're, we have two applications and it's two seats, could we not just in one motion say that we're going to seat this person in the regular seat and this person in the alternate seat? I think we can handle both of them at one time.
If you wish to make-
Most of the board is, wish of the board to go through the, the process. So purely, I mean, looking at both candidates, they're both clearly qualified, but looking at, so really, the only I can think of to do it is in order that the applications came in. So my motion would be to seat Mr. Carswell in the regular seat and Mr. Kirby in the alternate seat.
All right. Gentlemen, you've heard this motion from Commissioner Burns. All those in favor of the motion as he has presented, signify by the uplifted hand. All those opposed? That's three to two. Madam Clerk, okay? All right. This moves on to item number 11, reports and comments tonight. We'll open the floor to receive reports and comments from the board and staff, and we'll start down there with our attorney representative tonight. Any comments from you, Mr. Lawes?
There is nothing for me, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just on, on behalf of all our furry friends that live outdoors, if it's too cold for you outside, it's too cold for them. So bring those puppies and kitties inside tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager.
Nothing for me, sir.
All right. Commissioner Stroud.
Yes, I just, I thank y'all for everything. I'm a little understanding on this procedure we just did with the, with Johnny and Jean. I wish it would went the other way. I wish Jean would have been the first seat. I have a little issue with Johnny. I guess everybody knows that. When a man don't shake your hand, I have a little problem with that. So anyway, that's just my comments on that. I don't like the way that went. I don't, I'm not a big fan of Mr. Carswell, just because a man don't shake my hand. So anyway, thank y'all, I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. Burns.
I was fortunate enough to go by the YMCA this afternoon on the way to the meeting, and I just wanted to let everybody know that they would launch their annual fundraising campaign. I've got a brochure, if anybody here wants to look at it. YMCA does a lot, and if you look at the brochure, it says YMCA of the Catawba Valley, not to be confused with the YMCA of Catawba County. So Burke County is in the Catawba Valley. There's several funding options, donation options in here. It's a really good cause. They do a lot for kids. I've got a friend of mine who, who uses their facilities regularly after having lost his life, and it's, it's his bright spot in his day. And so anybody listening or anybody in the room would be interested in this information, I'd be more than happy to share.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, in response to Mr. Stroud, the reason I voted for Mr. Carswell, he has a lot of experience in this area, not that Mr. Kirby doesn't. And I think Mr. Kirby looks like he would probably be prepared and a good candidate for any other board we had, including the one he just got voted on as the alternate. And I don't want to sit up here and tell you that former Commissioner Carswell and I haven't butted heads because we have, but it's always been in a cordial manner. And I hope that soon that you two can maybe patch things up because I-
I agree. Let's do it publicly. I don't think the man can do it.
Well, I don't want to get into that. This is my time to speak, but-
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yes, sir. But, I mean, both of you are good Christian men, and I'd like to just maybe, maybe follow the Lord's prayer on that and forgive somebody of their trespasses, and you, or you won't be forgiven of yours.
Absolutely.
But that's all I had to say. I think Mr. Carswell would do a good job, as will Mr. Kirby. And I would appreciate it, sir, in the future, if I could speak at my time. I did not interrupt you.
Well, I don't want to act like Mr. Carswell for once. I don't want to be, act like Mr. Carswell for once. So there you go. Let's shake on it. Thank you. Sorry, Phil.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Barry.
Yeah, I did get to attend my first meeting of the Child Fatality Prevention Team today, and, and that's pretty heart-wrenching, anytime you're dealing with kids, you know, that have passed, and some of the circumstances, but, but some goods, I haven't been on there, but this, this one meeting, but I can see the group's serious about trying to find out what we can do to maybe stop some of that or prevent that, or just learn. And, and so there's going to be some education pieces coming out from the Health Department, and I'm excited to see, you know, that group work together. It's a pretty large group and a serious group, so it's always sad when we lose kids, but, but I'm glad that I got appointed to that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. All right. I don't have any other specific comments tonight. I do want to make a number of courtesy reminders. Centrals of County Government will be carried on this week, January 23rd and 24th. We have a number of Commissioners who will be attending that event, February the 4th, Board of Commissioners' regular meeting at-
That's pre-agenda.
Should be 3:00 P.M.
That would be the pre-agenda meeting, February the 4th. Then February the 14th, Board of Commissioners' recess meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the chambers, and there will be a light breakfast provided that morning. I guess that'll be a Valentine breakfast morning, Madam Clerk. Youth groups interested in leading our pledge, as I mentioned earlier, would certainly love to encourage you to, to come. If you've got youth groups, church groups, school groups, please consider coming and leading us in our pledge. Also, reminder for spaying neuter your pets, visit our Burke County Animal Services Center. Cover your loads. If you're going to the convenience center, the idea is to get trash to the center, not up and down the road on the way. So, you know, it always amazes me, I, I see folks come out of a, a fast food joint and throw trash in the back of their truck. And, you know, the, the idea that that would stay there is pretty amazing to me. So please, keep your trash under control and get it in the proper places. Don't litter, and if you see some trash, pick it up. That would be great. All right. This brings us to item number 12, vacancy announcements. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is every opportunity for citizens to become engaged in county boards and committee. We have the following opportunities on the Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. We just filled the Board of Adjustment for the ETJ seats, the Burke County Public Health Advisory Board, the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Drexel Planning Board, ETJ Alternate, the Burke County Planning Board, particularly in the eastern part of the county, and Partners Management Human Rights Committee.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, I would encourage you, if you're listening tonight, or those of you in the audience, if any of these boards, commissions, committees might be something that you could help with, we need folks to participate. So we would encourage you to, to go and get applications so that we might could seat you on one of these boards or commissions. All right. Gentlemen, we do have a need for a, I believe, what will be a brief closed session tonight according to NCGS 143-31811A and 3. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one question before we do that? As our clerk pointed out, we have some board openings. I was contacted today by a citizen who said they put in an application on January 6 for the Planning Board of Eastern Section of the county, and so I'm just wondering if we're going to take that up.
Yes, that will be on your February agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Any other questions before we go into closed session? All right. Seeing here none. All those in favor going closed session, signify by the uplifted hand. And gentlemen, we're on a pretty good time, so let's just move right on into closed session if we can. if we can. Okay, we've just about cleared the house.
Yeah, cleared the house.
Okay, gentlemen, we had a proper motion to come out of closed session. I will announce that we approved a personnel agreement during closed session, and no other action was taken. So with that, I will entertain a motion to recess our meeting to February the 14th, 2025, at 8:30 a.m.
Motion to recess.
All right, those in favor signify with the uplifted hand. Five to zero. Thank you very much.